Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Item number one is Call to Order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebX events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number two is Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I should look to the clerk's office. Are there any comment cards?
None for this meeting, Mayor.
All right, that makes Call to the Audience very short. I will close that portion of the agenda. And next up, we're going to move to item number three. Now, just as a note for council, we've got a special meeting that has to start promptly at 6:00, so whatever we do not finish, we're going to have to probably kick to a future meeting, just to, just wanted to put that out there before we get started with our presenters. Item number three A then is Downtown Tempe Authority Update. I'm going to go ahead and call upon Kate Borders, Executive Director of the Downtown Tempe Authority.
Thank you all for having me. Now, when you're first on the agenda, it is right up. Well, Mayor and council, it is a pleasure to be here. We have been working together as an organization since we were formed in 1993, and I think it's just helpful for us to come on a regular basis and tell you what we're up to and kind of share some of this with you. And I get to advance my slide. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to do a little bit of just information about us as an organization, what we've been up to for the last few years, because I haven't been here to update you since pre-COVID, and we have some new council members. And I think you'll find that my overall theme is just gratitude, gratitude around how we work together. And if I thought I was grateful before the pandemic, we've come up with so many more partnerships since then, so I can't wait to share them all with you. Okay, so who are we and what have we been up to? I think you all know, we are the Business Improvement District that manages downtown, just a half a mile square, and it is all funded by property owner assessments, important to keep in mind. And if you go back to 2020, we never took a day off. We spent that time really focusing on what was critical to our stakeholders, our businesses and our visitors, and we made sure downtown was the cleanest, safest place that it could be. And you'll see, as we kind of went back to 2020, we had to look at our core functions and then ramp back up to what become the, the most important things that the city sees potentially. But in 2020, it was those core functions. And so we, we literally sanitized every single thing that someone could touch, probably twice an hour. So your downtown was clean, and we did a lot of advocacy for the businesses and made sure that they were thriving, and then we did massive marketing campaigns to keep them going. 2021, we were able to redo some events, some placemaking, and of course, like everyone, we had some hiring challenges, so we brought all of that back. So I want to talk about some of the things that we started working on in 2020 and have continued working on since then. So many of you have heard of Team Tempe. This is the collaboration that started back in 2020 with our organization, your organization, the Chamber of Commerce, Tempe Tourism, and Local First Arizona. And those groups started getting together on a work, weekly basis to talk about how we could help the businesses. Everything from the services that they could get from the state to the federal government to local programs and projects, and we stayed in touch with them on a regular basis. Some grants were provided by the city. So many things happened, but that group was formed then, hadn't existed prior to that, and it is still meeting regularly today. And now there are new missions for that group, but it's, it's really critical that this kind of, all of these people are getting together on a regular basis. We also started working on the streetscape, and I know you guys have been talking about the streetscape. I'm so thrilled that you're talking about the streetscape. I love when you're asking questions about when is it going to happen, because it's really important to us. I can tell you that when we ask our merchants what's the most important thing to them, what they say are events and infrastructure, mainly lighting and the streets being improved. So it is really critical to our businesses. I think all of you know that we launched the Military Banner Program in 2021. They're re-up now for the second season, so that was also in partnership with you. Just recently, we started doing a retail recruitment plan, and we're thrilled to work with the Economic Development Department on that. So thank you for launching that initiative, and we're looking forward to what comes of that. Hopefully, some of the few vacancies that we have will be turned around through this program. For a while, we've been working on transportation demand management, which was more of an issue in 2019 and then less of an issue in 2020 when we didn't have as much traffic, but we're hopeful that that will become an issue again, and how we can manage the traffic in our downtown is critical. So another thing we're doing together. Curb management is looking at every single square inch of the curbs within downtown and how they're utilized by delivery drivers, people that are coming to the downtown, visitors, where we have meters, et cetera. So this is really important, and we're doing a study right now to assess how that needs to be changed or updated for the future. And then, of course, you're getting regular updates on the homeless programs that are happening through the city, and we're staying involved in all of that as well and working with our merchants and keeping the merchants involved. And the event that you had last Friday was just a piece of that, so thank you for that. And then, from an event perspective, I shared with you that our merchants say one of their most critical needs is events. They want feet on the streets. They want to see people coming into their businesses. They want new customers. And so events that we produce may seem to have a motive that is related to some other thing, like foodie Fridays. Of course, we're supporting food trucks, but we're also bringing people into downtown to showcase the space, to make them familiar with it, so that it becomes a place where they build memories, and it's their downtown. So these are all events that we launched in the last year or two with you as partners. I can't thank you enough for those. Veterans say, of course, we didn't launch, but we're now assisting and being a part of that. So that is tomorrow, and I hope that you join us tomorrow for that event. I think all of you will be there. Okay. And this is one of our most recent partnerships. We did a pilot project right here at Seventh and Forest. I think it looks great. I hope that you consider doing future projects of this nature with street painting. And before I move on from these kinds of partnerships, placemaking and events, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that two weeks and one day from today is the street parade, so come on down and celebrate the opening to the holidays in two weeks and one day. The very following week is Tempe Festival of the Arts, our 54-year-old, longest-running state art festival, so another event that we produced. And then, right after that, we will have the boat parade and then also Second Sundays. So a lot of events coming up. This is the season. Okay, so the other partnership I wanted to mention before we move on to what we're doing now is our office. I don't know if everyone knows that we are in a city building. We're in the Hayden House. It is a pleasure. Thank you for letting us be residents in that space. And one of the things that we've talked about for quite some time is how we can open it up to you to use it for meetings, for us to use it for meetings, and one request that we would have would be that you would consider a liquor license for that space, so that we could have more events that are either public-based or community-based, and people can hold events, gatherings, receptions, things of that nature. So just thought I'd throw that out there. Okay, so where to now? I thought it would be helpful for you to see kind of our strategic planning and how that lines up with your strategic planning. So these are our four main initiatives. Internally, how can we be the strongest organization that we can be? How can we work as best as possible with all of our partners? How can we make the place the best it can be? And then, how do we communicate that story? And these are your strategic priorities. And we think that many of the things that we're working on fit very nicely into the work that you're doing. And it's critical that we line up like this, because obviously, we want to be the best partner we can be. And our safety patrol team, our cleaning teams, our advocacy for businesses, the programs and events that we produce make the streets beautiful, things like that. Painting project on the streets, placemaking initiatives add to quality of life and safety. Those are traffic calming measures, just as much as they are beautification. So I want you to know that we're keeping an eye on your priorities as we create ours. So as we work on internal advancements, because you care about financial stability, all of the things that are important to the city and running a city, we want you to know that those are also critical to us. So we look at our systems, we look at our office culture, our financial stability, our green certification, inclusivity, equitable behaviors within our organization are critical to us. And then, these are just some examples of some of the partnerships that we have within the community, and we strive to make those really, so that we're weighing in and are valuable to our partners as much as they are to you, and we're bringing more partners to you as well. The place, this is where everyone is keenly aware of our responsibility. We want this to be the most thriving downtown that's out there. We compare ourselves to other cities locally in the valley, but we also compare ourselves to other national downtowns, particularly college towns. So we're always looking for best practices, and we're always trying to improve this. I don't know if any of you noticed the mural that we did along Mission Palms, but those types of activations, they make the place special, and they let people know how much we care. So it's not just the big, huge events like the art festivals, it's the daily interactions that people have with our place and how they feel safe and secure. They believe that it's well-maintained, and then they get to have a little fun and do something like a kickball league, which the finals were last night. And then, finally, the story. If we're doing all this work, it's critical that we're telling people about it. So we work closely with your marketing department, your PR teams and your PIOs, and we make sure that people are aware of the good work that's happening. And one of the questions that we've been asked about recently was music on Mill. And I just wanted to reference the fact that a few years ago, we opened up the live music permit process and made sure that any business within downtown could easily get a live music permit. And since that time, we haven't had any other merchants ask us about getting a permit. So we believe that everyone who wants a permit has one, but we're reaching out to them constantly to see if they, if there's anyone who needs a permit. Beyond that, we want to incentivize live music within our venues. So to any degree that we can do that and work with you guys on programs that incentivize live music, where we have an impact with our merchants is kind of understanding their business models and where it would fit well with their business. For us, with the events that we produce, live music is a really, really integral piece of everything that we do, and we continue to add live music into every single one of our events. So anything that you come to, Second Sundays, Park After Dark, our Tempe Festival of the Arts, we've made music, and the hiring of local musicians at an equitable wage, one of our priorities. So we're not asking them to do this for some subpar payment. We want to make sure that they're being paid what they deserve, just like we pay the artists what they deserve as we work with artists. And then, finally, we think that this is something that we could definitely put a stronger marketing campaign around, so that we're promoting the live music that is happening within downtown. The scene certainly has a lot of DJs right now. That's sort of what's being preferred at the moment, but there is live music happening, and we want to make sure that the community is aware of that. So, Councilmember Navarro, I know this is important to you, and I'd love to keep working with you on anything that you see that we could do to make an impact here. So that is a really brief overview, because I know you guys have two hours before you need to get to your special meeting, but we'd love to do anything else that you feel is needed in the downtown. And again, we're so grateful for all the ways that we already work together.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I've got a couple of council members here. Councilmember Garland, followed by Vice Mayor Adams.
I love this presentation, because it's so much fun to see all the things that you're doing downtown. I love how you've activated downtown and how you continue to do it, and there's always something going on. So if somebody was interested in looking and finding the calendar, they go to downtowntempe.com.
Yep.
All right, everybody heard that. Downtowntempe.com to go and look at all the events, because I pulled it up today, and there is a long list of things on there, and it's the perfect time to be outside. So I just want to say, I think that's wonderful. I was driving by on the way to the veterans' breakfast this morning at 5:30 in the morning, and there was somebody cleaning the streets out there.
Yes.
The sidewalks. I'm like, oh my gosh, this is so incredible. I know you guys do it all the time, but the guy was out there cleaning. God bless him. I think the liquor license is a great idea. That back patio that you guys have is beautiful, and it's a great size and location for events. I think that's a great idea, so I'm looking forward to you guys bringing that or to us. So thank you. Great job, Kate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Vice Mayor Adams.
Hello, Kate. Thanks a lot for your presentation. You're doing such a great job as a leader of the organization, and we love partnering with you on all of our events and just really appreciate all your hard work. You're always there, you know, when we need you, and you're just, just a great leader. Also, I also am supportive of the liquor license for your area, and I think we can get that done, but thanks just for being such a leader and such a wonderful partner.
Thank you. It takes the whole team, so have an amazing group of people that I work with.
You do. I visited with them the other day.
I know.
So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kate. And obviously, this is downright in the wheelhouse. No, I appreciate everything you guys are doing, activating and trying to get this thing going, and obviously, COVID kind of put a stop to things, and we're kind of ramping back up. It seems like we're, we're filling the, you know, the need of this thing to get going. And I know that, I think that I'm asking council and staff and, and reaching out with you to kind of coordinate, what can, what else can we do? I know you probably talked about it with live music and stuff, and, you know, I think even we're talking about what are the possibilities of Sundays? Using those Sundays to open, shut down some streets and just kind of let it free flow? But, you know, I know we've talked about, and this happened even with COVID, but even in a general area or in a district, having the ability to, one day, just have your drink or carry a drink outside the restaurant and be able to walk within the street. I think those things have made it more attractive when you start doing things that other areas across the country are doing. I think people enjoy that. I take Sundays, because I think it's a little bit more of a mature day in downtown Mill than any other day. And of course, when you talk about live music, I don't think it's really working so much yet on the weekends, Saturdays, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, or Friday, Saturday, Saturdays, but Sundays is an opportunity to have that slowdown, to have that live music effect. And I like to work with you and staff and just kind of be able to open that up a little bit more strategically, you know, what's a good start. I know we want to activate areas that help, need that help and activation, but at the same time, I'm thinking, take the areas that are already activated to grow them into those other areas. I, you know, talking with, with council members, I think the consensus might be one day is Mill on Sundays could be actually shut down and let that street just flow. I think there's an opportunity of doing that, and I think there's an opportunity of working with the city to make those things happen and, and trying to do something different than the rest of the region's doing. I mean, we're competing against Scottsdale, to be honest with you. Scottsdale's doing some great things, and they're starting to become that Nashville, so to speak, with bachelorette, you know, parties and whatnot, but they are spilling over into Tempe. I'm seeing that. But I think that with the hotels and with the army coming online, I think it's an opportunity, it's a true opportunity when we have visitors coming in, potentially more visitors coming in, that they're going to see this as a unique place, just like some of the other cities between Nashville and Austin and some other cool locations. I think we're up there too. We just need a little more push and a little more guidance, so I'm hoping that we can achieve that. So thank you.
I think the streetscape will be huge for that.
I do, too.
So along with your Save the Trees t-shirt, we can get a Let It Flow t-shirt.
You cut a ficus down. We're going to have words.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Hodge.
How you doing?
Good.
That's good. Thank you so much. Your presentation, as everybody else said, was great. My question is, we do, I see a lot of events. Is there, do we have a, an opportunity to do more family, younger children events? I know the live music, but I also want to make sure that we can bring in the younger population of kids, too, and some things that maybe teenagers would like to do also in there, too, because a lot of teenagers are not downtown as much as they can be, and I would like to see if we can start bringing more events that maybe is geared towards families and really young, like teenagers.
I have teenagers.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They're hard to please.
They are.
But yeah, I agree. And we do try to look at everything that we're doing and see where we can add components that will be specific for different age brackets, because I, and I would say, you know, elderly guests are sometimes harder to attract. And of course, they love the art festival, but they may not like other events. So, and we try to look at everything we're doing on a calendar year and say, do we have something for everyone? You know, every race, every demographic, every group. And so I appreciate that, and we'll keep working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kate. Thank you to you and your team. You are such great partners. Vice Mayor Adams and I work on the Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee, and we have shared that your partnership is so important to us, and we hope to continue to strengthen that and expand that. I, to tagging along on Councilmember Navarro's idea, that actually relates to Councilmember Hodge's idea, I recently did some research for you. I attended the Ciklos Diaz event in San Diego, and a few of my friends put that on, where they do shut down streets, and it's a roll and ride and flow kind of an event, all ages, live music out there, and a lot of the businesses were activated and opened early. Happy to share my notes with you, but thank you again.
That would be wonderful. And every event that you guys go to, I mean, I know you send me images, send me ideas. Yeah, traveling is one of the best ways to think about what we can do.
Except for Kansas City.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Any other councilmembers additional comments or questions? One more, yes, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, I would be supportive also of closing down Mill on Sundays and, and really activating it into a music scene. And I know Councilmember Navarro and I are very excited about the landscaping and the improvements. We talk a lot about it, and the sooner the better. And I love the new mural over by your office. It really looks great. So thank you for leading that effort.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for all that you all do and the partnership, and see you soon at all the events.
You got it. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Next up, item 3B, 2022-23 Federal Principles. Looking at Marge Zilla, our Government Relations Officer, and Brent Heberly from Ballard Spar, our federal lobbyist.
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'm Marge Zilla, Government Relations Officer for the city, and I'll have Brent Heberly introduce himself.
Hi, Brent Heberly with Ballard Spar from the Washington DC office.
Now, in item 3B, you'll find for your review, Tempe's federal principles for the remainder of this year, continuing on into 2023. And before we begin any discussion on that component, I'd like to turn it over to Brent to offer a DC update.
Thanks, Marge. It's a pleasure to be here today. I wanted to, before I started, I wanted to acknowledge one of my colleagues who's here, Mark Kokanovich. He's with Ballard Spar's locally with the Phoenix office here. He is, more importantly, he's a lifelong Tempe resident, not lifelong, but a longtime Tempe resident, I should say. So he's my, my eyes and ears on the ground. So yeah, so let me, let me just start with, obviously, we just, we just had an election, as I think most of you are aware, with a little background on kind of the impacts that, that that may have on DC, in DC, and kind of on our advocacy efforts going forward. So, and then I'll get into some of the policy issues that we've been working on over the past year. So assuming the Democrats win the Senate races in, here in Arizona and also in Nevada, they will retain control of, of the Senate, and that's kind of irrespective of what happens in Georgia. We have a runoff election in Georgia that will occur on December 6th, so, but if those two seats stay in Democratic hands here and in Nevada, the outcome of the, of the Georgia election won't matter. I mean, obviously, a lot of folks are hoping to retain that seat as well, but so, so that's kind of where the Senate is. The House, obviously, is a little bit of a different animal right now. We're still counting votes all over the country. I think, you know, looking into my crystal ball, the expectation is remote that the Republicans will take control of the House, but by very, very slim margins. I think we're looking at somewhere between 224 and 226 seats that they will control in the House chamber when, when it's all said and done. So that's, you know, that's a six to eight-seat margin, which is, which is very, very tight, and, and the new speaker, which presumably will be Kevin McCarthy from California, that's going to create a lot of challenges for him going forward. So, you know, it's probably going to be a week or more before we know the, the ultimate outcome, but, you know, it's, we do know, based on what's been said publicly, that the, you know, the expectation for the Republican agenda in the House going forward next year will be a lot less about legislating and a lot more probably about investigating. There's going to be a lot of oversight that is done of the Biden administration. Think of Hunter Biden and his laptop. Think of COVID-19 spending. Think of, you know, the Biden administration border policies. These are all going to get investigated by the House of Representatives should it turn into Republican control. So, so that said, I mean, it's, it's going to be a challenging year, I think, for, for us in terms of the legislative agenda, certainly for the Biden administration, they're going to be in a little different posture than they have been over the last two years. But there are a few things that, that have to get done, and these are, these are things that we're focused on, because that is where we can really get stuff done for the city. So regardless of who's running Congress, we have to pass a budget every year. We have to keep the federal government open and operating. So that is, you know, an area that we have been very focused on over the last couple of years, the federal appropriations process. The big issue there that we're watching closely is whether federal earmarks or, there's a lot of different names for this now. We don't really call them earmarks anymore, but congressionally designated spending. It's the projects that members fund in their districts. So those, those came back a couple of years ago, and we've been pretty successful working primarily with Congressman Stanton on getting money directed back to Tempe for, for a variety of projects. But it's an open question if, if, if the Republicans do take control of the House, whether they will continue that. There certainly is a large block of members in the Republican caucus that do not support earmarks. None of the Republican members in the Arizona congressional delegation support earmarks. So one would expect them to advocate, you know, for the elimination of them. However, across the country, this year, we saw about 121 Republicans make requests. So that gives us hope that, that, you know, these projects will remain viable in the future, and we have a couple of projects that are still kind of pending right now in Congress. One of them is an affordable housing, affordable workforce housing project, and the other is a transportation project that relates to an underpass for ASU in, in the city. So, you know, those are the types of projects that we look to, we look to fund each year in the appropriations project, and I, and, you know, fingers crossed, we hope to continue to be able to do that. So in terms of the policy agenda going forward, what we're kind of staring at right now is beginning next week, so this will be before the new Congress comes, comes into session next year. We'll have a lame duck session of Congress, and that will be to wrap up the appropriations bills that they have not passed yet for this year. That's priority number one. The other, the other big-ticket item is a National Defense Authorization Bill that they need to get done. And, you know, these, so these two bills, in essence, become kind of Christmas trees for a whole range of projects and, and policy matters that members want to try to get done before the, before this Congress comes to an end, you know, at the end of this year. One of the things we're, we're focused on closely is the Defense Authorization Bill, not, not for defense reasons, but because, like I said, it has become somewhat of a Christmas tree, and there's a, there's an important water infrastructure bill that has been attached to that defense bill, and that is, that is, that water infrastructure bill has $37.5 million in it for the Chirene Water Reclamation Facility that Greg Stanton was instrumental in, in getting put in. So we're very hopeful that the defense bill gets done, because it will be our vehicle to get this, this funding for the Chirene project across the finish line, and that'll give us an opportunity to work with the Army Corps of Engineers over the next several years to chip away at the funding needed for, for the expansion of that project. Another important area that there's going to be certainly a push in this lame duck session, it relates to housing and especially affordable housing. I know this is an issue very important to the mayor and many of you, and that we've been focused on very, very closely over the last couple of years. There are two specific bills that are bipartisan bills in the House and Senate that we think have a decent chance of getting through in this lame duck session. One of them is called the Neighborhood Homes Investment Act, which would establish a new business tax credit to help finance and develop and rehab homes in economically disadvantaged areas. The other one is the Affordable Housing Credit Improvement Act, which would expand and make some revisions to the low-income housing tax credit. So those are both tax-related provisions that help incentivize the development of affordable housing, and certainly would be helpful not only in Tempe but across the country. The other item that, that we really have been, and I think this is what I spent most of my time last year talking about, is the bipartisan infrastructure bill. As many of you know, that became law, and what we're seeing now and what we've been involved with is the kind of implementation of that law. There are billions and billions of dollars that are available for state and local government for a whole variety of infrastructure projects, so we've been So, we've been having conversations with staff here about the opportunities that are available now and that will be coming available in the future, and trying to help them understand how to best position the city to compete for these grants. You know, one of the consistent themes that we've heard from staff is that they feel like they may not just have the internal capacity to go after all of these grants, and that's a common refrain you hear from cities, counties, all over the country. There's all this money that's coming out of the federal government, but you really, you have to have the ability to, you know, apply for it or you're not going to get it. So, you know, I think a lot of cities and counties are facing a lot of difficult decisions, budgetary decisions, about whether to, you know, beef up their kind of internal capacity to apply for these grants. And, you know, there's no guarantees when these are competitive grants, but it is, you know, it's something to think about because there are, there are a lot of opportunities available on the infrastructure side. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is just the US Conference of Mayors and National League of Cities, those are two organizations I know that everyone here is very active in. I think it's absolutely great. I know Mayor Woods now has a leadership role in the Housing Committee and the Conference of Mayors, which is fantastic. You know, these are very important organizations to get involved with and be active in because I think they really do give you an opportunity to kind of elevate Tempe's story at the national level. And particularly now with the Biden administration, these organizations, they've never been more powerful than they are right now. We've seen that through, you know, the American Rescue Plan and all the funding that they were able to help deliver through the American Rescue Plan, and that continues through the infrastructure, implementation of the infrastructure bill. So, you know, I had the pleasure of spending some time with the mayor in Reno last year at the Conference of Mayors annual meeting. I know some of you are going to be going to Kansas City soon for League of Cities. So, just know that, you know, we're working closely with the national staff on a lot of these policies. The policies you'll see in your federal principles really do align well with, you know, with the policies that the Conference of Mayors and the League of Cities are pushing every day with Congress and the current administration. So, with that, I will stop, and obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sounds good, Brent. Thank you very much. I'll just say very quickly, too, I've just really appreciated the opportunity to work with you and just the great service that Ballard Spar has provided to the city of Tempe in partnership with Marge and the great work she does here as well. So, I just wanted to say, very excited to have you here this evening and just, you know, love what you're doing. And I was going to say, too, you talk about, you know, him being your eyes on the ground. I've seen him for three straight days. So, I mean, he's doing a very good job of being eyes on the ground. I'm like, what are we doing tomorrow for Veterans Day, you know? So, so it's, I wanted to say thank you again, though, and I wanted to see if anyone on council has any comments. Councilmember Navarro.
No, thank you, and I appreciate the update. Just one of the things that's coming up, and I think I talked to Marge today, is when public safety with the new administration or a new change, what's the support for grants, funding, things that relate to public safety in various different ways with PD and Fire? Is that still something that's going to be on the horizon for support for improvement? I mean, we talk about staffing, we talk about training, we talk about equipment, technology, you know, where I work at. We're talking about things in the airport and what we can do to make it safer. Is there, do you think there's still going to be that support out there with the change?
Yeah, I do, Councilman Navarro. I do think there is, the support's going to continue. I think, you know, we've seen some pretty robust numbers in the last two budget cycles for public safety funding. We actually, you know, there was an extra bump in the American Rescue Plan for several firefighting programs, grant programs, as well as the infrastructure bill. So, I think, you know, there's been a lot of, there's been a national conversation going on about public safety over the last few years, but I think, you know, I think that is beginning to resolve itself, and I think we're, you know, we are not seeing really any more efforts in Congress to limit funding for, you know, for public safety or certainly for public safety in a broad sense. You know, I think it's quite the opposite now, and the reality is with, you know, the increasing national disasters that we're seeing on a regular basis all over the country. I mean, that's just even heightened the need and attention given to, you know, the funding needs for those organizations. So, I think they'll be in pretty good shape.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you for the presentation, and it's a pleasure meeting you in person. I'm so excited I talked to you on Zoom. Now I'm seeing you in person, it's great. My question is, I have two of them. One is about Universal Preschool Head Start. You know, how do you think with the new change of maybe the House or, because I know we, the Senate will stay Democratic, how do you think that will impact Universal Head Start preschool?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly will have an impact. I think, you know, there was a lot of excitement last year when, you know, at the beginning stages of the development of what eventually became what we call the Inflation Reduction Act. That was, that was the, you know, a very large budget bill that Congress had put together originally to the tune of around $4 billion. And it included funding for Universal Pre-K, you know, Head Start, a lot of very important, you know, human resource programs. Unfortunately, those all kind of fell on the cutting room floor when the deal, you know, got negotiated. So, you know, there's still certainly many folks in Congress that are, you know, that's their number one issue. They want to keep pursuing it. You know, it's hard to see how we get that done, though, if the House.
Flips.
Flips. In addition to that, I think, you know, another very important policy matter is the child tax credit. We saw, you know, that was part of the, trying to remember which bill actually it went through on, but it was, you know, it was very clear that that lifted millions of children out of poverty. I mean, it worked. And, you know, the irony is, is that it, the genesis of that proposal was really, it's a Republican conservative proposal, using the tax code to kind of help families, you know, with children, give them extra support. So, there's going to be a continued effort to extend that because it expires soon. It was a limited extension that they had for that tax credit. But, you know, we're going to be in a situation, I think, with divided government where, you know, we're going to have heightened concerns by House Republicans especially about too much spending, needing to curb, you know, cut spending, pay for it somehow, and, you know, there's just going to have to be a lot of trade-offs, and I don't, I don't know how that's going to play out. It's going to be difficult.
Well, I have a follow-up to that question. You think that this, would the Biden, would help it out with college loans and forgiveness? You think that will continue? You think the, you think that Congress will go after it if the House flips?
Yeah, I think, I think that they were, the House Republicans will certainly, you know, conduct oversight hearings on that. You know, look, we had an election, and there was a feeling that, that a lot of people were going to be upset about, you know, the debt forgiveness and, you know, the school, the student loan forgiveness. But, you know, it didn't turn out that way really in terms of the backlash that, you know, the Republicans thought they would see in their own communities about, you know, how people would react to this. So, I think, you know, I think that stays. I think that remains. I don't think it's going to be repealed in any way. I don't know that we're going to see anything additional beyond what's already been done.
Okay, thank you. My last question is a good one. Gun violence and gun control, do you think, how do you, how's that going to portray? Because I've heard, I've been watching other races outside of our state, and I know some of that, some places, that's a hot topic about keeping less control on guns, and in some is they want more control. Is there anything that as a city we can do to help out in our area? Because we might not be able to get it nationally helped, but what can we do and what can we keep an eye on? Because that is something that affects everyone. And I worry, I worry, I worry a lot, especially, I worry about our schools, I worry about just putting it in the wrong hands of people. And it's, gun violence is not going anywhere, but I know certain people want to put it underneath the rug like it's not there.
Yeah, no, it's certainly an issue that Congress grappled with this past year and had, you know, very limited success. But, you know, if anything else is going to happen, and I think that the odds are pretty low that it will, it will have to happen really over the next month while the Democrats are still in control of Congress.
Have you heard any rumbles about them trying to push something through or?
Well, you know, it's all about the Senate and about trying to get 60 votes in the Senate, and they just have not been able to kind of, you know, get over that hurdle. So, you know, it's the same thing with voting rights, election reform. We have this ceiling that we're close to getting to hitting, but we just can't get over the hurdles. So, I think it's pretty unlikely, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Anyone else, any other further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, great. Thank you very much, Brent. Really appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I guess, Marge, you're not going too far because item number 3C are our 2023 state legislative principles.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, Marge Zilla, Government Relations Officer for the city. Item 3C, you'll find for your review, Tempe State Legislative Principles for 2023. So, these principles will be the basis for Tempe's positions during this upcoming legislative session, which begins on January 9th. The principles are arranged in general categories and include the overarching policies of preserving local decision-making and preserving local resources. Those are followed by bullets that address more specific topics. Those include supporting human services resources, integrating the municipal perspective into water management, supporting the authorization for the Prop 400 extension for transportation, evaluating potential tax proposals, and considering support for issues that would benefit our partners, which could include other cities or different entities. Staff will be continually seeking direction from the council throughout the session and updating council on the status of legislation that could impact Tempe, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Marge. Just one quick thing. I was wondering if there was any way that we could talk about adding something, or I don't know if this is appropriate to add to the legislative principles, but talking especially with the most recent incident in our community with a short-term rental. I know that, you know, with Senate Bill 1168, it allowed cities and towns to have a little bit more ability to regulate short-term rentals here. But still, as we, a lot of us have, I think, probably feel up here, it doesn't go quite far enough when it comes to, will this really provide us with the tools that we need to prevent something like that from ever happening again? And the answer I've had to give a lot of residents is frankly, no. The council is going to go as far as the law allows us to go, but that, but we can only walk up to that point. So, I was curious, is there some way to put something like that regarding short-term rentals and kind of, you know, continuing to lessen some of the preemption to allow us to govern our own cities? Is that something we could add to these legislative principles, or would that be handled in a different way?
Sure, Mayor. We could absolutely call it out specifically. The legislative principles, as we did last year, we were able to support under the overarching principle of increasing local authority, as well as we have a component about land use and wanting to make sure that local perspectives are considered with land use. And so, the city has supported efforts to completely remove the preemption that began in 2016 with Senate Bill 1350, and also work for more local decision-making. So, the principles as stated have it, and we can also put more specific language in.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilmember Hodge, then Councilmember Garland.
I just have one good question. Is there, I've been hearing grumbles about another special session before the beginning of January. Is that happening or not? Because I've been hearing about that, is that true?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, there were recently some statements made by candidates about a special session prior to that, like candidates coming into office, which would not be something that would be available to a candidate prior to them being sworn in, and then other topics that could come up as a special session, and we will continue monitor for that, our education, and then also the Prop 400 extension.
Thank you so much. Let me go to Councilwoman Garland.
I thought I had two things on my list, but I only had one, and the mayor picked it up. I had, I just wrote down, what can we do about Airbnb? Because when you look at the very first thing about our principles, it says preserve local decision-making. We can't do that with what they've done with the Airbnb in our own community. We can't control that. So, that was the only one that I had, but I will say, while I have the mic real quick, is what you do to put this together for us and to follow all these bills during the legislature, I just want to tell you, I just think it's amazing. So, thank you for what you're doing for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garland. Any other councilmembers, comments or questions? Hearing none. Marge, in what is always the shortest presentation of the year. You've done it again. Thank you so much. All right, next up, item 3D, 2022 Community and Employee Survey Results. I'm going to call upon Wydell Holmes, who's our interim director of Innovation and Strategic Management Office, and Chris Tatham from the CEO of the ETC Institute. Good to see you both. It does feel like Chris was just here last week, but that was actually a year ago, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us here tonight. Wydell Holmes, interim director, Innovation and Strategic Management Office. We are thrilled to have back with us this evening, Chris Tatham. He's coming in from very cold Kansas to visit our lovely, warm city here in Tempe. And historically, Chris has presented our residential and our employee survey to council, and that will help you prepare with some of our other presentations tonight. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chris from ETC Institute.
Great, it's great to be back, members of council, mayor. This is the 2050 year that I've done surveys for the city of Tempe. My very first one was to figure out what you should develop with that lake you have in town now. It didn't exist when I did my first survey. So, anyway, since then, I've managed surveys for 23 of the 25 largest US cities, 78 of the 100 largest US cities. Our company does work all over the world now in four continents. We've surveyed more than 3 million people in the last 10 years in the thousand cities and communities around the world. So, this is my favorite community outside of my hometown, so I like to come back here and pay special attention because frankly, of all the communities that we work with, you actually use this data in ways that really makes it worthwhile for me to work with you. So, anyway, there's a lot of personal investment from me because of the way you use the data. Today, I'm briefly going to go through the resident and employee surveys. I know you've got a lot of the agenda, so this may seem a little quick tonight, but certainly, if there's follow-up questions, you have a great staff, and I just think they could probably answer most of the questions better than I can these days. So, let me just start off with the resident survey. This has been a really difficult year. When I came last year, I think you were really surprised that the results had gotten better. You got through COVID very well. COVID, basically, in most people's eyes, has come to an end, and expectations went right back where they were before COVID, and then some. So, expectations for customer service, expectations for many things have gone up significantly around the country. In addition, we've had a lot of shootings, we've had concerns about police, we've had issues with interest rates, inflation, a lot of other things that has caused nationally of the 104 surveys that we conducted surveys in from July 1st through the end of October, 93 of the 104 saw decreases. The good news for Tempe is you held pretty steady and have actually improved in some areas. And again, I think it's your commitment to listening to residents and using that feedback in great ways that really helps you do that. Tonight, I'm just going to briefly walk you through what the overall result said. I won't spend a lot of time in the methodology. I know a couple of you are new, so you may have concerns there, but I can assure you that we do everything possible to make sure the survey is as accurate as it can be and that your residents are well represented. As far as the methodology, the overall survey itself is similar to what we've done in previous years, but we do use new methods to get people to be engaged. We do address-based sampling, and we select 500 households in each of the character areas with our goal of getting at least 100 surveys from each character area. We follow up with people with mail, with postcards. We even do directed social media ads to make sure that the people have an opportunity who are selected to know about the survey and respond, and the city does a great job of promoting it. This year, we had almost 1,000 people complete the survey with at least 100 from each character area. The data is then weighted to make sure that since the population of each character area is not the same, that the overall survey results for the city represent the entire community. It looks good with regard to race, gender, and other factors. I won't go on to all of that today. This map just shows the location of respondents, and you can see we have good distribution really throughout the city. So, bottom line is, I can assure you, your data is very good, represents the community. So, based on that, I want to help you with some of the major interpretations. First, I come here, and I think you maybe celebrate just once a year. celebrate just once a year, maybe it's when I come, but you are one of the best performing cities. And what's great from my perspective is it didn't happen just once or twice. It happens year after year after year. For now, well over a decade that we've been doing the survey. You've been in the top 10% now multiple times. Should be really proud of that. Nationally, the results have decreased, but one of the things that we did to help give you a better benchmark is we no longer just compare you to a set of other cities that do surveys. What we found is other cities that do surveys tend to be the higher performers, and sometimes it's hard to tell where do you really stand. So this last year, we launched a new national survey that's actually statistically valid for the nation, for regions, and also based on the size and characteristics of different, different communities. So the mid-sized benchmark I'm showing you this year is actually the average for all cities that have people between 100 and 250,000 residents. Here's the celebration slide. Overall quality of city services rates 27% above the national average. Value for taxes, 22% above the national average. Leadership of city officials, you can see, is 61 compared to a national average of just 39. So think about that. Average community, less than 4 in 10 people feel good about their city elected officials. Here, it's over 6 in 10. And you can see the image of the city is particularly good as well. These are phenomenal ratings. They truly do put you in the top echelons of all communities, and you didn't get there by accident. So congratulations on that. And not only do you rank well in our strategic indicators, you rank well in just about every area, the major service that's assessed. You can see here in descending order, whether it's community centers, your transit service, recycling, customer service. I won't read the entire list. I'll just emphasize how long the blue bar is compared to the other ones. You're clearly setting the standard. But I do want to emphasize customer service at 72% compared to a national average of just 41%. That's 31% above that because you have great employees that have the respect, in many ways, maybe the admiration of some of your residents, because they don't give those kind of ratings to people when they're giving average service. You truly are doing exceptional in the way you interact with your community. Even on other things like your library, your outdoor athletic fields, major streets and sidewalks, I won't read the list. It'll sound like a broken record. It's high ratings in just about every area. But there are some that I think you should be paying attention to, and that comes to the bottom of this list. You can see there's some of the issues with code enforcement, but you'll notice that overall feeling in the safety is actually now below the national average and the average for other mid-sized cities. As we look into the data, it's not because people are concerned or dissatisfied with police. It's beyond that. I recently did some focus groups with your business community on some homeless issues, and I think there's a variety of factors contributing to that. And nationally, we've seen the overall perceptions of safety decrease by five to 10, in many cases, more than 20% in communities, just because of many of the shootings and things that have been happening around the country. When it comes to the overall trends and how things have changed in Tempe compared to a year ago, as I mentioned upfront, most communities have seen decreases. The national average has decreased 7.2% from 2021 to 22, while in Tempe, it actually didn't change at all. So in some ways, you've gained against the nation by staying the same. Your overall satisfaction rating last year was 78. It's 78 again this year. And overall, it's actually with customer service, which has also decreased in most communities because of the heightened expectations coming out of COVID, actually improved by 1% here in Tempe. So again, congratulations on that. And of the areas that were assessed, 123, this is a very comprehensive survey. You can see about half increased, 65, 58 decreased, but there were no changes of more than 10%. So most of the changes from year to year were pretty small. So you held very steady from 21 to 22. As far as some of the biggest increases, some of them were in areas that actually you had to close down or reduce services during COVID, things like recreation programs, your library arts programs. You'll notice that your how easy Tempe 3111 call to City Hall is to use went up significantly, made gains in your website, street lighting, property maintenance of codes. So a number of areas have improved just over, compared to a year ago. Areas that we've seen decreases, you'll notice of the top five, four of those five are related to public safety. And the prevention of crime is not correlated strongly with police. It's other factors that I believe are contributing to that because your police ratings actually stayed solid while the national results have dropped 10 to 15% for police ratings. The other piece you can see are ease of access to open data. As you all share data, I think you're creating more expectations. I mean, the very fact that all the survey data is available online now for dashboards for your community shows you are transparent. But I think part of that comes that you're going to create expectations, so you'll need to be responding to those growing expectations as a result. The other thing is you can see energy and sustainability programs. Those would be rising expectations in those areas. So the areas on these are the ones that we saw the most, the biggest decrease year on year. With that said, we took a look at what the priorities are. They have not changed, and actually, that's a really good sign. Many communities saw things that weren't even priorities go to the top, like police services of many communities was a low priority. It's now off the charts at the top priority. It's been a high priority for a year, or for several years, but it didn't really change. You can see police services, social and human services, condition of streets, infrastructure, neighborhoods, that group of five items has been pretty consistent for quite some time. When we do our analysis to identify opportunities for improvement, in other words, where should you invest more? Where should you communicate more? What should be the things that you're really docking and looking at? You'll see social and human services and police services are at the top, followed by economic and business development in neighborhoods. What I want to emphasize is when we do these analytics, we actually have two more levels. We have very, very high priorities and very high priorities. You don't have anything, in fact, your ratings for your high priority is just barely above the standard at .10. What that means is your city pretty much is aligning its priorities and how you're doing with the expectations of the community, and it's a great place to be. But I do want to point out the human services, the social issues, police services, and I think there's an underlying issues related to your homelessness that are contributing to that. As far as some of the other survey questions, I'm just going to briefly highlight this. We asked people about what the priorities for age-friendly community the next 50 years. It was housing and public transportation. We're at the top two things if you want to make this a good place for people over 50 in the future. Your top sources of information are your newsletter and your websites. That's a great place to be because that means that you're putting out the information. You can be sure that people are getting the right information. In many communities, social media has become the number one source, and oftentimes, you have no idea what's being communicated there. As far as issues facing the community, housing and sustainability are at the top of the list, and housing involves the cost of housing, the types of housing, and probably even includes some of your homeless issues there. And then when we ask people about the importance of developing different types of housing over the next 30 years, detached, single-family, townhomes, condos, you can see were considered to be most important by half of the folks. Ironically, on the other end, your high-rise apartments were least important to two-thirds of the folks. So again, it doesn't mean you don't do some of these things, but certainly the desire for single-family townhouses has long, that's not uncommon, I guess I should say. I do a lot of these surveys, and that's typically the preferred type of housing. With that said, I'm going to briefly go through the employee survey and let you know what we learned there, and then I'll wrap up. As far as the purpose of the employee survey, it's much like the resident survey, but for you to track how your employees are doing. We give every opportunity, every employee an opportunity to participate. They can do it online. They can mail it back. They can even call us. And this year, we had 643 employees complete the survey, and it's representative of each of the departments. So we felt really good about that. As far as the major findings, like with the city resident satisfaction survey, employee satisfaction is actually significantly higher here in Tempe than the national average. Nationally, it's at 68%. You're at 80%. Doesn't surprise me. You've got great resident ratings. You probably have happy employees who like working here that are contributing to that. As far as the overall stacking up to other communities, you can see your perceptions of physical safety, your immediate supervisors, training being appreciated by immediate supervisors. You can see a theme of immediate supervisors here, get really high ratings, your professional development. Those things all rate better than the national average. You'll see you're about the same when it comes to information being available in a timely manner and what people are paid. That's pretty much on target with what we see elsewhere. But you'll see that poor job performance and employees feeling motivated about what they're doing rank below that. And so those are things that we've been sharing with employees today or the last couple of weeks, so the management can look at those in a little more depth. One of the things we have noticed, though, is nationally, this is the Gallup indicator on employee engagement that they release every year pretty periodically. You can see it hit a peak in 2020. It dropped to 32 this year, down four points or 11%. We saw a similar trend overall in the employee survey results where their employment engagement went from 60% to 53. So a lot of the things that we see in the employee survey are similar to what we're seeing around the country. When it comes to some of the trends, short and long term, of the 54 areas that were rated in both 2020 and 22, nine increased, 45 decreased. So we generally saw a decrease in most of those ratings. Long term, if you go back to 2018, 38 of the 54 have improved. So most of the decrease that we saw was from 2020 to 2022. As far as some of the highlights, I won't go into all of these for time purposes, but professional development, career mobility, and your health benefits are two of the areas long term that employees have really noticed a positive trend in, have rated significantly better. And we can also see in the short term, some of the things even related to supervisors, those kind of things have seen improvement. So those things you've done just in the last two years to improve your wellness program, got better ratings. So even though we saw a number of areas go down, there were some highlights that were positive this year. Here's the one you probably don't want to see, but it's affecting everybody nationally. Only three areas have decreased by more than 5% since we did the core survey back in 2018, and all three of them have to do with basically pay and compensation. You can see overall perceptions of being paid for the work that they do fairly is down 11%. Deferred compensation benefits ratings are down 11%, and the overall perception, the amount unpaid is fair for the work I do, is down 11%. And that's pretty much what we're seeing elsewhere. So that's not a surprise. And that benchmark I showed you earlier showed you we're on par. You're almost exactly the same rating as the nation. The big thing, though, is this has happened in the short term, just the last two years. You'll see two years ago, from two years ago, it's down 14 percentage points. So you actually went up from 2018 to 22, and most of these decreases have come since then. And of the seven biggest decreases listed here, four of them are related to compensation and benefits. And so that's just something you'd be aware of. The good news is, is when we do correlation analysis for your employees, they're not working here just for the pay. There's a lot of other things that keep them here, and I think that's important, as your employees have a lot of other reasons that they work for the city, and they really care about the jobs they do, and the underlying data shows that. As far as how to help the community use the data, we actually have developed dashboards. And I'm not going to give a demonstration tonight, but they're all available online. And you can go through the employee survey and see all the results for different departments and different types of respondents. You can even do that for the resident survey. And if you really like to see maps and trends, one of the neat functions I really like is the maps that show trends. You can literally see, like, street lighting went up overall from a year ago, but the very northern part of the city actually went down. Why that happened, I don't know, but the maps are good insights to help you understand what's happening, particularly when you're looking at each of the character areas and those things. So in summary, I know you don't have any cake or party balloons here. Most communities that get these results wouldn't, and I, and we laugh about that, but I'm literally going from city to city to city delivering terrible news this year. When you do 140 surveys, 104 surveys in four months, and 93 went down, and the average decrease is almost 10% across the board, and it come to Tempe, and I look at your results, which are pretty much solid as far as where they were last year, you're doing something right in an era when a lot of communities are really struggling. So you're to be congratulated that. Your overall satisfaction rate is 27% above the national average. Job satisfaction among your employees is 12% above the national average. And frankly, these results I know will continue to be used by you to make the city an even better place to work and a better place for the residents to live. So it's great to be in your partner. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but that gives you the high-level 30,000-foot of what's a lot of data. So.
Thank you, Chris. Really, really, really appreciate it. All I can think about now is that I want some cake.
Yeah.
But Councilmember Garland.
I enjoyed looking at the survey, and thank you so much for that. And I, I do like seeing the trends and things that you have. But my question is probably more for us, for Wydell. It was very interesting reading the comments that you attached at the very end. There are some great suggestions and recommendations. I'm curious, what do we do with that, since that's outside the scope of the statistics and graphs and things that you're showing? What do we do as a city to really address some of those suggestions and comments that are in there?
Thank you, Member, thank you, Councilmember Garland and Mayor. That is a great question, and I'm so glad you asked it because it's one thing to collect the data and ask people to take the time to give us their ideas, their input, give us their feedback, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly, all of that. But to act upon it really means we truly value that opinion. And so we are working with some departments, specifically, we're going to take a deeper dive with Chris's guidance in regards to departments that might have received an 80% or below satisfaction rating. And that includes, you know, even some of the community items as well. So we're putting together, you know, groups of people that can have an action plan around this and then implement it. So it's collect the data, but then act upon it, and then act upon your planning. You know, hope is not a strategy, is what I want to name my first book. So we can't just hope things stay the same and things, you know, in areas where we have opportunities for improvement, we need to put some focus on that as well. And so we'll be working collaboratively across city departments and with teams here at the city to do that.
I appreciate that. One, one of the thoughts that I had was Andrew, city manager, puts out that Friday newsletter, that Friday thing that you sent out. And I was thinking, would it be really cool if you, like, added one or two of, maybe just one of those comments? Somebody made a comment on this survey, one of our employees, and here's the answer to it, because it would be really fun, because we don't know who wrote it, but it would be really fun for them to be saying, I'm the one who turned that one in, and look at, they're actually doing something about it. I think just, that might be kind of cool, just a suggestion.
Great.
Thank you so much, Wydell.
If I, if I could share in regards to that, through our Technology and Innovations Committee, we've come up with this idea about an innovation inbox. And that would be also a place where we could take those ideas and act upon them, you know, research them, see if they're, you know, feasible, implement them, and then honor the employees that, or community members that came up with those ideas. I would like to share that, Chris, this is his fourth presentation of the day, and we had over 200 employees attend the employee session for both the community and the employee survey results. So our employees are engaged, and they're loving the data. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Adams?
Just the areas that need to improve could, when, come back, like, in a couple of months and let us know what the plan is for, for the improvements?
Absolutely. Sharing our plan and then implementing it and acting upon it is where we, where we keep ourselves accountable. And so having a forum to share that publicly is important. I would suspect, too, that we would also do a public-facing dashboard regarding what are we doing about a lot of these. So for the community survey, our strategic plan with our performance measures usually align to items that we find on the community survey that we can focus on. And then for the employee survey, we could come up with a strategic plan similar to our community safety strategic plan and have a public dashboard for that, so that we can track our progress.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the, yeah, so you'll come back in a couple of months or whatever and, and give us an update on?
Happy to. I don't know if I can get Chris to come with me, but we'll certainly be back.
It wasn't all, you know, happy in news, especially in the employee survey. So I just want to make sure we have an action plan to implement.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good point. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Anyone else? Further comments or questions? All right. Well, once again, Chris, good news, being short presentation. Thank you so much.
We wish Chris a safe flight home tonight.
Just out of college, huh, Chris?
There we go. And once again, item, Wydell's not going very far, because item 3E is the Strategic Management Performance-led Budgeting Process Update and Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe Process, which is otherwise known as the START tool. And I also see that Mark Day, our Municipal Budget Director, has joined us as well. So floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director. As you stated, joining me is Wydell Holmes, Innovation and Strategic Management Office Interim Director. So we are here to provide updates on the performance-led budgeting process, as well as discuss the strategic tool for aligning resources for Tempe, or as we affectionately call it, the START tool, that will be utilized to gather information about your priorities before we begin the operating and capital budget process for next fiscal year of the 2324 budget.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Mayor and Council, the update tonight includes four key areas, our performance measures, some things that have been revised, proposed, removed, and an item that is also on the horizon. We'll talk a little bit about how we approach performance-led budget with kind of an outcome first, and then aligning resources to that. And that leads us to the START tool. And then also, we'll just remind you of the acceleration models from 2223 that are also identified in your packet tonight. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about our performance measures. These are over 105 performance measures that operationalize your strategic priorities. And while they're category, categorized in five thematic areas, what makes Tempe unique is that we align targets, goals, and outcomes related to those priorities. So just an easier way to have a framework as to, are we all moving in the same direction? And so on your slide today, you have two performance measures that are in orange. It's 20-minute city and transportation system satisfaction. I'd just like to note that those have been on our strategic plan. Our 20-minute city has been a placeholder, but staff have worked diligently, including with our new staff, Strategic Analyst Adam Samuels, and the departments, to really move placeholders to operationalize measures. And with the 20-minute city, that you'll have now your targets, your benchmarks. You'll also have a little bit of clarity about, or more clarity in regards to what is a 20-minute city, in regards to being able to take care of your basic daily needs within 20 minutes of your house. within 20 minutes of your house, and that does not include work, though. But we do have so many different items here in Tempe, such our multimodal, we can bike, we can walk. And so that's a measurement that says, and can we do that across the city, not just in certain pockets of the city? The second one is our Transportation System Satisfaction. This performance measure has been brought in to include not just the riders of our transportation system, but our non-riders, because we know that it's a holistic program for all of our community members and our visitors. And so there's a slight revision in regards to that, where we're able to track both of those categories. The other four that are in the blue, I'm real excited about some of the movement that we've had on these. The first one is innovative. This is our Alley Quality Index. I know you've heard a lot in past council meetings about our payment quality index. We're now looking at alleys in the same way. And so Tamika Myers and her team and wonderful people have come up with a way to look at our alleys for both egress, dust control, maintenance, making sure that they're in the conditions that we want them to be in Tempe, that will continue our positive comments from our, from our community, as well as create safety and great asset management with our alleys. The second one is in regards to crisis support. This is a novel response. It's been in place with Tempe Fire Medical Rescue and CARE 7 for many years. But now, this particular response also includes the police department. And so basically, the measure is about what percentage of time can they actually respond to the calls where it's appropriate to have their response on the scene to help somebody in need? And this is for crisis, trauma, homelessness. There's specific categories that we're tracking that we have the capacity through the CARE 7 team to corespond with police as well as with fire. And so they introduced that measure so that we're doing what matters and we're measuring what matters. The second item that's also in blue, another proposal, is in regards to our community health and well-being. This has been a placeholder for several years. It also included a placeholder for mental health and wellness. And the Community Health and Wellbeing Performance Measure is informed by the social determinants of health. But we actually have two questions on our community survey, and it's part of the cantral scoring system. Basically, it asks our community, now and in the future, do you feel like your life will be better, the same, or worse? And so we're tracking the percentage of respondents that are in the category of thriving, surviving, or thriving, surviving, and then suffering. And so we absolutely want to move people out of those two lower categories into where everybody in Tempe here is thriving. So by measuring that from our community survey, we're able to align strategies towards doing that and also working with other community partners. In your packet, you'll see just right now our baseline data, because we integrated those questions into the 2022 survey. But we will be able to update the strategic plan with an appropriate target. And again, this is just a moving and evolving performance measure, where we want to get it more right than not in regards to establishing a target. And the fourth item that was proposed and had also been a placeholder for a few years was in regards to water. And specifically, the proposed measure is regarding our groundwater supply. Our Municipal Utilities Department has determined that we would like to move from our current capacity of water, it's 25 million gallons per day, to a capacity of 43. That is very proactive in regards to if we should ever have more of a drought, or we should be limited on the water that we have available for our city, that we have groundwater that's available. And so there are CIP infrastructure projects ongoing to address this goal. And so there's, again, we always want to align our activities to what we're trying to achieve. So I'm really thankful for Tara Ford and her department for helping to move this as an operationalized measure for the city. The, and I also just want to re-circle back, for mental health and wellness, that is incorporated now into community health and well-being. So I didn't want to not honor the work of former council member Arredondo Savage, who really advocated for our work in mental health. But we think it's a more holistic measure by putting those together and through our measurements. So two other items that I'm excited about, and this is kind of our innovation, our park ecosystem, we want to measure the health of our parks. And we know that if we don't look at what's successful or what's not in place, we don't know then what to do, right? And so this is an innovative index that Community Services is working on, led by Craig Hayton, regarding how are we going to know that our parks are healthy? So you might relate this back to the quality of our alleys or the quality of our streets. Our parks are also part of a valuable asset here in Tempe, so we're working with them on an innovative index for that. And then I did mention earlier something on the horizon, and this is in regards to our tree shade canopy. So we have had that measure with Richard Atkins, our urban forester. It's kind of still, it sounds weird to say that in a desert, but an urban forester. And he's done a fabulous job on helping us maintain existing trees and their canopies as well as planting. But we know we can't plant our way to shade across the city. And we know that it's a health and wellness item, it's a sustainability item. It's also a way to help people be more mobile for alternative transportation and transit, right? And so we are working with a team from community development, sustainability, community services, and I know I'm going to forget another area, to put together an innovation session where we can talk about what can we do to integrate not only tree shade canopy, but perhaps a design canopy, as a council member has referred to it as. So we have some ways that we're looking at, how do we measure this? What strategies do we need to have in place, and what policies also might need to exist to really achieve that goal here for the city? So I'm just excited about those, and that's probably the longest slide I'll talk on. So, thank you.
Okay. As it relates to the budget process, once your top priorities are identified through the START tool process, the Innovation and Strategic Management Office will work with the departments on a hyper-focus on those prioritized performance measures to develop strategies for their advancement. So we call this performance-led budgeting. So there's three approaches we can take. One is to collaborate, so either with other departments or outside agencies. So I think we saw that this year in the park safety, where the police, community services, and human services collaborated on strategies to address homelessness in the parks. We could shift resources, so maybe we were overachieving in one area, and we could shift resources to address those priorities that you have identified. And then lastly, why we come before the budget process is, do we need additional funds? And that would come through the operating budget supplemental or a CIP request. At this point, we're not asking you to allocate specific dollar amounts to projects, but just rather identify your top priorities. And just a quick review of the process for the current fiscal year, so from a year ago, and how the START tool was incorporated into the operating and capital budgets. So council provided direction in December of 2021. We started working on developing the acceleration models for the 13 performance measures that were identified, came up with strategies that included cross-departmental collaboration that I mentioned, as well as additional funding. So the additional funding that was provided, you can see there, $12.9 million in the CIP program over five years for those 13 measures. And then for the operating budget supplementals, we had $4.7 million recurring and $2.5 million one-time.
So I get excited about new apps. So this is an example of a new app that you'll have as a tool for you with the START process. I'd like to highlight that it's mobile-friendly, so you can do this even perhaps when you're out of town at National Leagues of Cities. You're able to change your entries of the START tool during the administrative period. You also can export your own individual record of what entries you have distributed for possible acceleration. You will be provided in the app $100 theoretical dollars. This is very similar to what we ask our community to do during our open, during our public budget processes. And your maximum distribution is $20 per performance measure. You can always just leave it blank or zero, but somewhere between 0 and 20 would be the appropriate amount, so that we can do our calculations appropriately. The next thing I'd like to just remind you and invite you in regards to, you already have in your inboxes, an email from Kimberly Sotelo. She is part of our Innovation and Strategic Management Office, and she will be your go-to person in regards to the START tool. On November 11th, which is tomorrow, you can, it will be open for you tonight at midnight, so if you're up late, go ahead and start. We will ask that you complete your allocations, or your distributions by November 18th. And that way, we will have time to do our mathematical gymnastics and get back to you in December with those results. And with that, I'll move to the next slide, please. This is an example of the app that was created by our IT department. I'd like to thank Sean Welch, as well as Andrea Vassili, for putting the START tool together. It's very user-friendly. We also have some guides, should you need that. We were also very fortunate to meet with your council aides last week, and we provided an orientation about the budget process, performance-led budgeting, as well as the START tool. So we do have some resources at your fingertips for this. Just as a reminder, it's not an appropriation of funds, it's just really a distribution to help us have those early conversations and to help give staff focus on what direction you'd like to put our energies on for acceleration models. On the START tool, you'll see that you have whether the performance measure is meeting target or if it was accelerated for this current fiscal year. You'll also have in the additional notes whether or not it came up as a point of emphasis on our community, employee, or business surveys. Some other tools that you have, as Chris Taven mentioned in the last presentation, is we do have some interactive dashboards regarding all three of our signature surveys. You also have in your packets the strategic plan update. It's a, that's the static document, but we know that achieving priorities is a very dynamic process. We also have in your packet the 2223 accelerated performance measures with the strategies and some budget funding summaries for you. Excellent.
Okay. As Wydell mentioned, your packet does contain, these are the 13 performance measures that were accelerated for this year. So your packet includes the funding amounts and what strategies are being implemented to accelerate those. And with that, concludes our presentation. We're welcome any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Anyone from council, any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Oh, Vice Mayor?
Sorry for this little response. I was just curious, streets and sidewalks, have that, has that improved in the last two years from our last survey?
I'm thinking about all the data points I've listened to today. I will have to check on that and get back to you. But what's really good about that is in our, on our community survey, we can cross-tab that with also what we're seeing. The performance measures, 30% of our performance measures are measured in evaluation of the community survey. So I'll look back into that, and I apologize for not having that for you.
No, no problem. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Very thorough.
Mr. Mayor, just a question.
Yes?
Is Vice Mayor Adams referring to the PQI going up or the community satisfaction?
I was referring to the community satisfaction, but I would like to hear about...
Yeah, the PQI would be interesting, too, to see, because I know we've been putting a lot of energy into improving streets, and I think that would be another objective measure that we look at very, very closely for tracking over time.
I completely agree.
Happy to follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great presentation.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
And once again, as is the trend this evening, Mark, don't go anywhere. Because item 3F is the Long Range Financial Forecast Update. And so I'll have Tom Dunzing, our Deputy City Manager, join us, our CFO, and Mark will stay. So, your show.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Tom Dunzing, Deputy City Manager, joined here by Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director. Pleased tonight to really take the first step in the budget process, and that's the presentation of the Long Range Financial Forecast. In my mind, this is probably one of the most important things we do. Where really are we going, and what does the future look like at this point? We're not asking council for any specific direction tonight. Certainly happy to take feedback and kind of our approach and any comments you have, and certainly answer any questions. Our next update to the forecast will be February 2023. And so that's just in a few months, and that one really sets the stage for how much capacity do we have primarily to entertain operating budget supplementals going into the next fiscal year, starting July 1st.
All right. Before we get going, I want to acknowledge the hard work of the budget staff in developing our long-range forecasts. So the Budget Office consists of Lori Ozakowski, hopefully I got that right, Scott Gruber, Robbie Ashton, and Benicia Benson. So just want to acknowledge their efforts. The Long Range Forecast directly aligns with the financial stability for the city. So the goal is to maintain the highest general obligation bond rating by keeping the general fund, fund balance policy levels and, I'm sorry, maintaining the highest GO bond rating and keeping the general fund within fund balance policies. And those are outlined in Performance Measures 5.04 and 5.05. So as we start the upcoming budget process, I'd like to briefly review the upcoming public meeting dates in the budget development process. On the left side of there is the capital budget. On the right is the operating budget. Sometimes those two coincide. So as Tom mentioned, we'll be back in February with the updated forecast, as well as the proposed CIP projects. We will be holding virtual and in-person public forums in the February-March timeframe. We'll be back in March with the initial recommended CIP. And then we have the city manager's recommended budget at the budget review session on April 27th, with a follow-up if needed. And then the last three days are more formal, driven by state statute. We have tentative adoption, final adoption, and then on July 27th, we will adopt the, or you will adopt the property tax levy.
All right, let's talk about a guiding principle that's important for council and the public to understand, what we use in the forecast. And really, the takeaway from this slide is we don't assume any revenues or assume any expenditures that have not been approved by council. A good example of that is an intergovernmental agreement. If there's an intergovernmental agreement that has not yet been approved for us to expend money, likewise for us to receive money, that is not built into our forecast, nor any agreements at this point. It's a best-budget practice, and it's just one of the things that we want to make sure that's clear to the council. Some of the assumptions in this forecast are, we are assuming no recessionary trend. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, is there a recession on the horizon? And we watch that every day to see what the data is telling us. But what you'll see in here is you'll see modest revenue growth in our forecast, and there's no big recessionary trend forecasted at this point. We do have a slide to show you what a recession would look like and the impacts it would have on our revenues. Also, one of the things that has been talked about a lot and is absolutely affecting Tempe is inflation, worker shortage. Inflation is real, we watch that. We plan on coming back in any of the, the operating and CIP requests that we make. We will have to factor in inflation, it's real. Hopefully, it'll be relatively short-lived, but at this point, it's one of the issues that we have to deal with. We also assume continued salary plans and market adjustments. One of the things that we want to point out in this forecast is there's no assumption that Tempe preextends beyond the current fiscal year, and that will be a discussion, I'm sure, among this council coming up. We've also included the operating costs of Clark Park. A couple of other assumptions I'd like to bring your attention, no changes in the state shared distribution formulas. We assume steady as she goes. One of the things we want to get on the radar screen, and it's been talked about at the last legislative session, it continues to be talking about with both the gubernatorial candidates, are changes in the residential rental tax and the food-for-home consumption. What we've put is the impact that it would have to Tempe if the residential rental tax, if we were not allowed to charge tax on residential rental. I don't want to confuse that with short-term rentals. This is any residential rental activity in the city of Tempe. If for whatever reason we were not able to collect residential rental tax, you'll see the impact on the city is quite significant. $16 million across all funds, $10 million, about $10.7 million in the general fund. So we watch, we will watch out for that, and Marge Zilla is absolutely aware of this, and the League is aware of this, and it's a discussion item. Food for home consumption similarly has about a $9 million, would have about a $9 million impact citywide. About $6 million of that would be in our general fund. So again, we'll watch that very closely.
Okay, let's, we'll talk about some recent impacts to the forecast. So retail sales have moderated a little bit in the last couple of months, but they continue to be strong, particularly from online sales, as well as our tax revenues from commercial and residential rentals have exceeded our projections and are projected to continue to go over the forecast period. The restaurant and hotel revenues took a deep dive during the COVID pandemic, but they have recovered and are anticipated to continue on an upward trend. And then state shared revenue, S... And then state shared revenue estimates have improved a little bit. And then as far as on the expense side, we have included in the forecast those supplementals and CIP operating impacts that were added to the budget in the, for the, this current fiscal year. So just as a reminder, in the general fund, we did add 18.1 million or 95 positions for this year. And then for all the other funds, we added 5.2 million and 34.75 positions. All right, this graph is just showing the trends in sales tax. We picked some of the major categories. So on the left side is the hotel motel restaurant and rental tax revenue. And then on the right is the general fund tax revenue. So the dotted line just shows you the trend. So if you follow the top blue line, you can see that the general fund sales tax obviously is upward trend. You can see on the right side there, when we look in August, September, that little moderation that I talked about. But it still has an upward trend. The restaurants, you can see in May and June of 20, they took a deep dive, the orange. But you can see, as I mentioned, they have a solid upward trend. And then rentals is the purple. It's been a little bit erratic, but as you can see, as we get towards June, July, August, September, huge increases in that income. And then hotel motel upward trend, you can see we had a big spike springtime and then we, it's a little bit seasonal. But again, all of these are showing upward trends.
All right, let's talk about the funds. Most of the discussion in the budget process does center around the general fund, and so we'll show that first. I'd like to spend a few minutes on this slide. There are a few takeaways. And really what this says is where have we been? How did we do? And where are we going? So fiscal '22, '21, '22, in the immediate left. What that shows is we ended up with a fund balance of about $142 million. That number was better than what we forecasted in February. So we did better than we thought. There are reasons for that. One of the reasons is we had more vacancy savings than we anticipated, which makes sense in the worker shortage. And some of the struggles that the departments are going through now, that does generate budgetary savings. There was a couple of big one-time payments that we received, primarily CFD assessment, CFD assessment payments of several million dollars. So all that together, we did do better than what we thought. We did anticipate us doing better, which allowed us to do some of the things during the year, the purchase of the Food City site, also to correct some of the pay to try to keep up with the market that council approved in this last budget cycle. We were able to do that. So that's very good news. The story moving forward is we feel like, based on those assumptions, we're about where we were when we forecasted in February, maybe slightly better. Again, this is just a preliminary look at this. We will know better. We do the exact same exercise in February, and that's really where we tailor our budget, what we tailor our budget around. But this gives you a nice first look at where we think, where we think we're going to be. The numbers clearly here are in thousands, so you have to add three zeros. I call your attention to that upper right chart. That really is our fund balance policy. That's the unassigned fund balance and where we want to be at the end of each fiscal year. We want to keep that fund balance between 20 and 30% of total revenues. We are in excess of that now, but during any forecasting, what we do is we present a plan to council where we want to get that down within that 20 to 30%. So this is really no different than what you see year over year. Couple of things that I'd like to talk about on this slide is at this point, we assumed recurring operating supplementals of about $5 million. That is a little bit better than what we thought for fiscal '23, '24 back in February. It's about a million dollars better. But that really is kind of a testament to the resiliency of our, of our, of our tax revenues that we've seen. Again, there's some, there's some threats out there. There's, you know, any changes in legislation or recession, but at this point, we're just not seeing it. We've had a very solid recovery. Lastly, what I would like to talk about on this slide is we assume pay-go, pay-as-you-go funding. And what that is, is money that we can infuse into the CIP. And we assumed in '23, '24, a $10 million pay-as-you-go funding. And really, that, the, the simple story to that is that is really a hedge against any inflation that we could see in '23, '24, to give a little shot if we need it. And for a multi-hundred-million-dollar CIP, it's a little shot, but it allows us a little bit of flexibility on important projects to be able to infuse some cash if we see inflationary pressures. Again, a couple of the highlights, tax revenues projected to grow. I talked about the pay-as-you-go funding. And basically, the, the big story is there's not a lot of excitement. It's about where we thought we would be in February and where we still continue, we think we're going to be. I referenced this slide a little bit earlier. This shows you impacts of a recession. And I kind of love this slide because it really shows you the recession we had in the early 2000s, the, the dot-com recession in the early 2000s, and then the great recession '07, '08. And you can see in '07, '08, we had a 21% reduction in revenues. What does that mean today? If we saw the same level of recession as in '07, '08, I don't think anybody's anticipating that. But if we did that, we're talking about a $30 million, $35 million impact to our sales tax revenues. So that would be significant. That occurs, or any level of a recession occurs, we would have to go in and certainly look at measures to be able to live within our means. And, and that, that, you know, talks about, we talk about what's the level of budget cutting and what are the different strategies that we can, that we can implement in case we have a recession. Again, we're not forecasting a recession at this point. We watch it every day. And this really was, on the fund balance, again, the chart on the right, which, which I really like, this shows a 10% decline in revenues. If we did nothing, you can see we would fall below our fund balance policy very, very quickly. So that necessitates the needs. If we anticipate a recession, another big impact from a pandemic, we would move very quickly to make adjustments in our budget. And again, this slide just really shows you the, the steps we've taken. Council has, has seen these before, but we just like to remind you that we do have a, do have plans in place in case we see something.
Okay, I'm going to quickly review the city's other major funds. So we have enterprise funds. Those are those operations that are run similar to a business where the user of the service pays for the service. We have our water wastewater fund. So this fund is stable. It does assume a planned drawdown, drawdown of fund balance that includes an increased pay-as-you-go or cash funding of CIP projects. The solid waste fund, the fund balance is projected to be maintained within fund balance policy during the forecast period with future planned rate increases and operational efficiencies have been built into the forecast. Our golf fund revenues are projected to be, to have moderate growth during the forecast period. The current, the fund does have a current deficit fund balance, but that is projected to be eliminated this fiscal year and returned to a policy level thereafter. This forecast does assume that both the Ken McDonald and Rolling Hills operate under their current structure. And then our last enterprise fund is the emergency medical transport or ambulance fund. This program is now fully built out based on the original pro forma with revenues and expenses in line with projections. And then we have our special revenue funds where the majority of the revenue can only be utilized for a specified purpose. Our transit fund, it does include, we had some significant increases in the bus fixed route and light rail operating costs. The fund does have a structural deficit, but it does have a very healthy fund balance. So staff is going to research ways to stabilize this fund in the long term. Then we have our HERF fund. So the HERF revenues primarily come from, through the state, through gasoline sales. They have moderated a little bit. It's probably no surprise that gasoline sales are down in Maricopa County. But, so we forecasted a little bit of moderation there. The fund is stable. And as always, HERF revenues are subject to pending legislation that may change the distribution from the state. And then finally, we have our arts and culture fund. This fund is stable with fund balances maintained above policy level. The forecast does include those additional positions and program expansion that was approved in the current year budget. And then facility revenue, you know, took quite a hit during the pandemic, and it's projected to have a gradual return to our pre-pandemic levels.
So Mayor and council, that completes our presentation. Again, we will be back in February when we really get into the meat of the budget process. We just really kicked off our budget process today with staff. And, and it's a lot of work that goes in, in developing. And again, hats off to Mark Day as well and, and his staff. This, this forecast, what we found, is deadly accurate. We are happy when we land on the conservative side. That's where you want to be always. And our staff does a phenomenal job with, under Mark's leadership. So with that, certainly open up any questions.
Thank you so much, Tom. Mark, just, I have one quick question. Just curious, how much is like, kind of like surplus funding is available this year when it comes to just kind of supplemental appropriation requests? I'm just sort of curious as to where we are. I know that we're, you know, kind of trying to get back within the sort of standard fund balance policy, but I mean, so while that's great, does that mean that there's less money to spend if there's other things that happen to pop up during the year if council members have additional requests?
Yeah, mayor members of council, that's a great question. And thanks, Mark, for going back to the slide. What you'll see right now, we have anticipated $5 million in recurring supplementals. That's the capacity. That is about a million dollars more than what we thought it was last year, so it's a little bit better. I can tell you, in total, it's not as good as it was last year. And the reason being is we had to get back, in other words, council restored a lot of the cuts that happened during the reductions in the pandemic. We finished that last year. And so there's quite a bit of supplementals approved last year. But now we're back, we're back to a more normal level, and it's about $5 million recurring, Mayor. There's about a million dollars in one time. There's departments that do have one-time supplemental requests. And then as, as we talked about a little bit earlier, is we've set aside $10 million for CIP pay-go. Again, it's, it's up to, it's council's prerogative on if we want to infuse no money into our CIP and use that $10 million for whatever. That's, that's fine. But this is just an assumption at this point, and we'll be able to really refine this when we come back in February for council to make its budget decisions.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Any of the council members, Councilman Garland?
I have a question. I don't know if this is where this goes, but, you know, we've got ARPA funding for projects and things that we're doing here in the city, and some of them, you know, like the hotel that we had. Does this take into consideration that when that, that ARPA funding goes away, how we are going to continue to maintain some of the things that we've set up through that funding?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Garland. The ARPA funding was used in the capital program. So it's used primarily for the Tempe municipal operations center, the family advocacy center, and I know I'm forgetting one. It'll come to me. Non-congratulate shelter. So we use it for one-time expenses.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, great presentation, guys. Thank you so much. You know, I love the budget, so I have a couple of questions for you. One is, what are we doing about our employees leaving the city? I know that other cities are stealing our employees. I'm just wondering what our plan is to prevent that from continuing. That's my first question, so I'll let you answer that one first.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor Adams, thanks for the question. We love the budget too, by the way. For any pay adjustments that, that we would, that we would entertain, what we would do when we present the February forecast, what we would do is, is go back and look at different, you know, what's our market conditions? Are we losing staff? And what we would do then is bring back a, and an, but, excuse me, a budget supplemental, an operating budget supplemental for council consideration. And it just, it would just depend what, what problem we're trying to solve. Is it, is it in one area? Is it citywide? And then, you know, based on our recommendation, you know, we'd bring it back for council for, for their approval.
I know we lost a lot of 911 operators to Gilbert recently. And so that's one area that I'm concerned about because that's such a critical area. I don't know. Do you have any comments regarding that?
Yeah, Mayor and council. Vice Mayor, one of the things I forgot to say is we really lean heavily on our departments. We lean heavily on our police department, fire department. If they are experiencing issues like that, bring forward a budget supplemental to get that corrected.
Can we have a plan to, to have them come forward and let us know how it's going and what we need to do to help?
We, the, the chief Glover is very aware of that situation. And, and if there is a budget supplemental request, we absolutely will bring that back.
Okay, thank you. Also, Mark, you mentioned that the golf fund deficit is going away. Can you explain that?
Sure. It has a, right now, a structural, or I'm sorry, a negative fund balance. And that was due to over several years of losses. But kudos to Community Services for revenues went way up, particularly during the pandemic. So we've been able, and they've watched their expenses too and put in efficiencies. So we're anticipating surpluses that would eliminate that negative fund balance.
Okay, and hasn't a play gone up significantly also?
I'd have to look to Craig Hayden for that, but I-
He's, he's going like this for me.
Thank you.
We got you covered.
All right, thank you.
Saved you the trip. Okay, thank you. And finally, I know that we're allocated CIP spending every year, and I'm just wondering, are we, are you using all those funds or are we going to have a plus balance on that at the end of the year?
Mayor members of council, difficult to determine, first off. One of the things is, is that we have to remember is very little of our CIP projects, other than the transit projects, are cash funded. We borrow for that. So what that means is we just issue less bonds. And, and so we monitor that really closely. There is a goal for expenditures in the CIP, and, and we do monitor that very closely if there is savings in projects. That's how we're able to come back if we have a need. That's how we're able to kind of shift around projects if something comes up. It's, it's not a lot, frankly. It's a, it's a pretty tall order for the budget staff to do. But luckily, we've been able to do it, you know, over the past year or two.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Like I said, great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Adams. Anybody else, any comments or questions? All right, we'll see you again in February.
Thank you.
Or before. Thank you so much. All right, next up, item number four called the audience. The next item on the agenda is called the audience for committee of the whole items. There is only one item ready for city council direction, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to item number five. 5A, items ready for city council direction or status update. The next item is 5A1, workforce readiness in livable communities, council committee new work plan for council review. And I'm going to turn to Councilmember Hodge and Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Our work plans in the, in the packet, I do have some talking points I can read here. In the interest of time though, I'm just happy to answer any questions that you all may have on it, or we could just be done with it and approve it and get to our special meeting slash pizza.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I'm comfortable with the work plan. Good job. You bet.
Wonderful. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over your work plans, what struck me as Vice Mayor Adams and I are working on the Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee, we have some shared goals. And I think it's healthy to have some of those priorities blurred. Our strategies may be different. We're coming at it from different angles, but I, I think it's a healthy bit of duplication, so to speak. And I think I loved it and I look forward to working together.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. I agree with you. There's, there's items like, you know, traffic mitigation I put in there, which is clearly is a livable communities issue, but also like Vision Zero is traffic-related. But to me, that's clearly a public safety thing. So I agree 100% and appreciate the support. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Randy, for taking all of my words I was going to say. But yeah, thank you.
All right, sounds good. So do the council members have consensus to move forward with their work plan?
Yep.
Great, sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, next up, I'll just check item 5B, council committees in progress updates is needed. Are there any other updates we need on items 5B1, 5B2? Are there any other updates we need on items 5B1, 5B2, or 5B3? Vice Mayor Adams?
Just want to talk a few minutes about our committee, our new committee. Very excited. I had our first meeting with councilmember Chin and myself on Monday, and we managed to get it together and pull it off. So, I just am really looking forward to working closely with councilmember Chin and have, we have great energy, and we're going to have a really good committee, so I'm excited about that. Also, just wanted to mention that the committee has changed its name, but sustainability is still a key factor. And councilmember QB and I accomplished a few things I just kind of want to remind everyone of, and that's EV charging stations, solar on buildings, green code initiatives, climate action plan, trap, neuter, and return. And we're only the second city in the country to have that program, so I'm so excited about it. We're just behind New York City on it. And I know that councilmember Chin and I are going to continue to promote sustainability and economic vitality. I'm very excited about it and look forward to working with you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Anyone else? Comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll close that item and move forward to the next section, which is future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session in accordance with the open meeting law. There should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any councilmembers like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? Councilmember Garland?
I'd just like an update to the boards and commission plan that we were, that we had presented to us last year, just to see where we are with that plan.
Sounds good. Great. All right. Thank you. Got a nod from our city manager. Anyone else? Any other items? All right. Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is mayor's announcements and city managers' announcements. I don't have any this evening. Mr. City Manager?
Just a big thank you to everyone who made the Veterans Day breakfast this morning possible. Got a chance to go out to the priest yard and get to meet a lot of our employees who are also veterans. And there were a number of volunteers from Tempe Fire Medical Rescue who, and from the local 493, went out and actually cooked breakfast, starting in the dead of night and then ultimately into the dawn, where ironically, it got much cooler. I don't know how that works. But it was great. A lot of camaraderie and just a wonderful way to salute their service and their continuing service as city employees. So, thank you to all who made that possible.
Thank you so much, City Manager. That moves us to item number eight, which is adjournment. The next work-study session is scheduled for December 8, 2022. Council, we are adjourned at 5:56 PM. We have four minutes till the next meeting.